Welcome to the council meeting of March the 3rd, 2020. We'll have a moment of silence to start. Approval of the agenda?
I have a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Dennis Perrier. Be it resolved, that council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of March 3rd, 2020 as presented.
All in favor? Passed? Any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Petitions and delegations? We have Elville Segi from Stantec about the decommissioning of the Swastika wastewater treatment plant. Elville, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. This is for, as described, this is going to be a project status update. And the agenda, we got seven key items we're going to deal with. One, a quick safety moment. We'll give you the purpose of doing this, the project history. We'll speak to the key issues. We want to speak to the budget, the schedule, and we'll do a wrap-up. So quickly, for a safety moment, something we do for every meeting. We want to stress the importance of safety. We do this at work. We do this on the outside with our meetings. This particular one is about emergency accidents. The best way in is not always the best way out. And sometimes, safety is about getting out quickly from an unsafe situation. It's important to know all your escape routes in an emergency. I think at home or at work, you basically have an awareness of where you want to go. But it's good to know the same thing when you go into another building you've not been familiar with, your stores, your hotels, those sort of things. If you think at home, if you have a fire in the front of the house, you naturally just go at the back. If you have a fire towards the back of the house, you go to the side, go to the front. What happens if you're in a building that you don't know the building? So you've got people in the audience here, they probably don't know where to go. And they probably will go the way they came in. So if they came in through that back door, they follow the exit and they go at that back door. That might not be the right way for them. And if they went out that door, they probably don't know where to go after they go that door. So food for thought for everybody, let's get in the habit of talking about that and asking yourself when you walk into a room, where do you go? Regularly look for these exit signs, because without that exit sign, you don't know where to go. If there's a fire, it's a blackout, that exit sign stays lit and you can see it. Same reason, always make sure these exit signs are always lit. If they're burnt out, say something, so people know. So it's something to take home, talk to your families at home, talk to your colleagues and guests that are in these rooms. So the purpose, we're going to talk about three key things today. Give you a project status update. We're at 50% completion, a little bit more, probably about 60%, but when we did this slide presentation, we were at 50. We're going to explain the challenges of keeping the project on budget and what we're doing about it. And we want to give you an idea of the project schedule and the next steps. So those are three things we'll talk about today. Let me step back here, the project elements. This is what was identified when we did the Class EA about a year and a half ago, the environmental study report was prepared. There's five things on this project. We're looking at the Swastika treatment plant. Part A of that is decommissioning the old plant, and we're going to put a small local pumping station that we've named the New Culver Park, the New Culver, geez, the New Culver Park Pumping Station. And then we have, within Swastika itself, we're going to upgrade the pumping station. And also, we're looking at sanitary sewer improvements to reduce the wet weather peak flows. We call them INI, inflow and infiltration. It's storm water, river water, groundwater that's getting into the sanitary system. We'll speak to that later on this presentation. Number three, we're looking at is servicing those properties on Highway 66 and 112. We are looking at the upgrades of Chappie Hughes Pumping Station, and of course, the new forest main, the buried pipe that connects Swastika all the way to Towne of Kirkland Lake. A little bit of project history. Back in 2014, an audit was done and identified that there are a number of risks at the Swastika Treatment Plant, the health, safety, environmental, and financial risks. At that time, the required upgrades were in the range of eight to eight and a half million dollars. Now, keep in mind, that's back in 2014, five or six years ago, so the numbers are higher now. In 2016, a feasibility study was prepared. It concluded that if you look at fixing the treatment plant in Swastika and running it for 20 years, it'll cost you about 15.8 million. If you were to pump to Kirkland Lake, the cost of doing that, plus operating it for 20 years, it'd be 9.5 million. So the savings over 20 years of doing this project is 6.3 million over 20 years. So that's really what's driving us getting to this point. In 2016, the town applied and secured grant funding to implement this project. It was two-thirds funded on the 8.2 million eligible value. So town shares 2.6 million for one-third, the province and the feds picked up their share of 5.6 million. So you're still carrying of this 8.2 million. Yes, you got to pay 2.6 million on it, but the payback is pretty quick, because you're looking at 6.3 million in savings. So it's a good news story that way. When we look at the grant funding application, and keep in mind, when this was done in 2016, they really didn't jump into the technical work of finding out what you really had to do. They took the best, what they were able to do at that time. So things that they looked at, they had to demolish the Swastika Treatment Plant. They had to put a small plant, a small pumping station there, because about 20 or 25 homes that gravity flowed directly to that plant. Everything else goes to Swastika Pumping Station, and then it's pumped to the plant. We looked at, at that time, they looked at Swastika Pumping Station, a simple upgrade, replacing the pumps, the electrics to pump the new flows, these flows to the Towne of Kirkland Lake, and of course, that new buried pipe connecting Swastika to the Towne of Kirkland Lake. When we did the class environmental assessment, other upgrades were identified, and these are not part of the original budget that you applied for grant funding. So the one is servicing properties near Highway 66 and 112. That wasn't part of it. Upgrading Chappie Hughes Pumping Station was not part of it. The building repairs and safety upgrades to both pumping stations, Swastika and the Chappie Hughes was not part of it. And improvements to the sewer system in Swastika to reduce that wet weather peak flow. So these are four new items. These are four items that came out of the Class EA study that weren't originally identified and put into the grant fund. So again, going back, the numbers that we presented during the Class EA, we said there were six big increased cost drivers that are increasing this project cost. One, as we mentioned, the wet weather peak flow. That's causing us to upsize everything. Rock excavation, there's a lot of rock between Swastika and Kirkland, a lot of rock everywhere around here. There's cost to that rock to remove it. We are looking, third one is servicing those properties, and we'll speak to this, that Highway 66 and 112, there's a big cost item there. Chappie Hughes Pumping Station, the longer forest main length. We looked at extending the first main further down Archer Drive all the way to Main Street, because that stretch of sewer would have consumed all its capacity. And Swastika INI improvements, that's doing some improvements to the sanitary system to get the storm water out. That drove that cost up to 10.2 million. Our end goal here, back then, was saying, we got to get it down, let's get that cost down to the low 6 million range. So that's what's driving us to get, looking at savings to get this lower. So three key issues that we dealt with. We looked into this excessive peak flows, these peak flows caused by wet weather, that's driving up the costs. Again, we'll speak to this, what's driving up the project costs and the savings associated with them. And these are the ideas that we're putting forward. We're not done yet. We're going to come back to you later for approval, but we're looking at these ideas to get this project back under budget. So the excessive peak flows. To give you some numbers on this, your average house in Swastika produces about 550, sorry, not your average house. Swastika produces about 550 cubic meters per day on average throughout the year, and there's one day a year where it's really high and it produces about 1,542 cubic meters per day. There's 191 properties that are connected. That averages out about three cubic meters per house, where your average house should be about one. So Swastika, for reasons, produces three times more sewage, more flow per house than what you normally would find. So what's that doing? That's causing us to upsize pipes and upsize equipment. We got to put bigger pumps in. With bigger pumps, I need bigger electrics. With bigger electrics, you've got a bigger generator. It's a snowball effect of increasing costs. More importantly, if I start, we start upsizing the pumps by 20, 30, 40 percent and more power, the cost, the electrical cost to operate those pumps over 20 years, it's an increasing cost. So it's something we're mindful of and we have to address. What are the sources of the storm water getting into the system? There's four ones that we have identified, four groupings. Culver Park area, we found an abandoned sewer leading to one of the manholes just before, right at the property of the treatment plant. And we're, that's probably ground, we believe that's groundwater getting in to the system, because we're not sure what this pipe does. It could date back to when the pavilion was there. And the pavilion's long gone, but the sewer and the ground is still there. So we're looking at what that is. We've taken some tests to see what kind of liquids in there. And there is some contamination there that we type, we would find from sewers, but it also could be just natural type BOD, that contamination you would find. It's not very strong, it's very weak, so it could be groundwater, could be influenced out of the lake, too. Water main bleeders. There is drinking waters continuously bled from the water mains into the sanitary sewer. There's three or four main ones, and there's houses that are also doing it, too, to keep your houses from freezing. So if you've got three or four bleeders that are three-quarters of an inch of line, there is a lot of flow that comes out of that. If you add it all up, it's a big flow. So what can we do about that? And we're looking at that. Athena Boulevard, the sanitary sewers on Athena Boulevard run behind the homes in the low-lying land abutting the river. During spring thaw, when the Blanch River floods, it spills over the banks and it goes into these, into that green area, and it's higher than the top of the manholes. So we know for sure water's getting in through those manholes. Those are old manholes and old sewers, so they're probably leaking as well. So there's, we suspect that's another area that we're seeing flow come in. Also, Swastika Pumping Station, overflow pipe. Normally, there's always an overflow pipe that's installed. We can't find this one, and maybe it's not installed. We're still looking to see if it is. And depending how they installed it, if the Blanch River were to go very high during spring thaw, it could cause water to come back up that pipe and come back into the sanitary system. So we're trying to find that pipe to make sure if that is happening or it's not happening. So here's some of the things that we're looking at for saving costs. The original budget called for demolishing the old plant, and we can defer that if we have to keep on budget, and there's a $50,000 savings there. Not a big number, 50,000, but keep in mind here, there is no, well, in this particular, normally, there's never a million dollar savings anywhere to be had. So what I like to say is, look for 20 ways to save 50 grand, and here's your first million. So we're looking at it that way. The new Culver Pumping Station, we're proposing a much simpler, smaller design. If you look at the two pictures, the top right picture is a very simple pumping station with panels outside. They're designed to be outside in the winter, and will protect them from snow. We'll have chain link fence, protect them from vehicles. The bottom right picture is actually the pumping station in Swastika. It's got a building with it. So if we get rid of the building and we use outdoor control panels, we can save 100,000. So there's an easy one to look for, 100,000 dollar savings. When we look at the two pumping stations, what we found during the design, that there's safety upgrades that are meant, needed to be undertaken. Those pumping stations were in the mid-'80s, say they're 35 years old. They were designed for the code of their time, they don't meet today's codes. So you're going to have to eventually do these safety upgrades, but these are not, these are cost adders. We don't have these in the budget. So there's 150 to 300,000 dollars to bring those two pumping stations up to code. Do we have to do that now? Can we defer that? So we'll come back to you on that. So I like to think we can defer it, but it has to get done. It's a safety issue. And now, also, there's building repairs. In the case of the two pictures on the upper right, you'll see the one with the red arrow. That's because there's a funnel with a hose, and that ceiling, that roof has been leaking for a while. And we got to get that fixed, just got to get it fixed. So it needs a new roof. Likely, it's been there for a while, I would say a number of years. That water has gotten into the block, and you'll see in the upper right-hand picture with the yellow arrows, if you look carefully, you'll see the cracked block. So we've got some longer structural damage in that building, because the block's been damaged. Do we have, there's about $200,000 in building repairs in these two buildings? And some of them are more priority than others. I think these places, you know, let's say they, in Swastika, the flashing is, the eavesdropping of flashing are starting to get very old. It needs painting on the inside of the rooms and that sort of thing. Can we defer some of those? Yes, we could. Cost savings of deferring is probably about 200,000. Chappie Hughes Pumping Station, the original idea when they budgeted this job was to take Swastika flows, put a new pipe, and construct this pipe all the way up 66 to Archer Drive, take it all the way down Archer Drive. What came out in the EA, though, is thinking that if we could send this to Chappie Hughes, and then we would combine it with Chappie Hughes, and then upgrade Chappie Hughes. Keep in mind here, it's extra dollars to do that, but Chappie Hughes is 35 years old. Your, that equipment, a lot of things in there are reaching end of life. So you're going to have to do an upgrade in there eventually. We thought, let's do it now, take advantage of the grant funding. If we were to defer that, we could save 300,000 dollars. Now, here's the big one. Servicing properties near Highway 66 and 112. Now, this was not in the original budget, when it was first applied for grant funding. We, it was identified in the Class EA that there was interest in need for this. The new sewer to put it in is 1.2 million. It needs a pumping station, that's about 400,000. The total cost of it is 1.6 million. Can we defer that? We're not saying not do it, but let's do it at a later date. That's a potential of a 1.6 million dollar savings. Now, if we were to do that, we'd have to communicate that to the public, so they understand. Also, in considering the future plan for local improvement projects, I mean, there is, I mean, there's a, the municipal allows to do that. This will be an improvement to that neighborhood and to that area, and there is other ways of undertaking that and going back to that, those people, if they want to do that, and there's a cost to it. We're also looking at the forest main pipe, and what can we do to save, cost-saving ideas? And one idea we're looking at is using insulated pipe. It's become more common now. You can, you can get manufactured PVC pipe, no matter exactly what you see and you use all the time, except they apply insulation to it. The pipe costs more to buy, but it's much cheaper to install. And two reasons. One, it's shallower, you only have to go half to depth. But the big thing is, if we don't have to go as deep, we don't have to remove as much rock, and rock is expensive. The rock blasting and rock removal is a lot of money. We've budgeted, there's been a budget of 1 million dollars on this job, 20% to remove rock. So we're still, we still need to do the geotech investigation that's going to happen this spring, and we'll have a better understanding of how much rock needs to be removed. And if we lift the pipe higher with insulated pipe, or you don't make it as shallow, don't make it as deep, make it shallower, we can reduce the amount of rock, we know that, we just don't know how much. So we're saying right now, let's go halfway and say, maybe we can reduce it by 50%. So there's a 500,000 dollar savings. Also, we have an idea here, another one we're looking is making the forest main length a little bit shorter. Because Swastika has really high peak flows, once a year, they're very, very high flows. Once every five years, they're especially high. We're sizing for something that happens every five years, and sizing, everything gets upsized. Also, what it means is, now we got to push this flow further into Kirkland Lake, because that sanitary sewer that you have right now at Archer, if we put it into the end of that pipe, it'll consume all the capacity in that pipe, and you won't have no capacity left for anything else. And that's not what that pipe's for. That pipe's for industrial lands and employment lands. So we're recognizing that. So we had thought, okay, let's extend it all the way to Main Street. Okay, so now I got to extend this pipe another 500 meters, and, you know, at 500, 600 dollars a meter, you can, you can get into hundreds of thousands of dollars very quickly. So we thought, if we pump into Chappie Hughes, and we split the flow, because Chappie Hughes has a pumping state, has a forest main that goes the other direction, behind the Comfort Inn, I guess we'll call it. And then we put the new forest main up Archer Drive, now during those really high wet weather events, we can split the flows two different ways, and we don't have to put as long of a forest main, and we can now control where we put flows through the automation of the pumping station. Better use the sewer system that you have, and we don't use up all the capacity of Archer Drive sewer. So we still need to further investigate the consequences under wet weather flows, what happens when we send these flows to those systems, to those sewers, but there's a potential savings of 250,000 there. Okay, big one is going to be, in Swastika, we got, somehow, you're going to have to reduce the wet weather peak flows. As we mentioned, it experiences, Swastika experiences very high peak flows during wet weather conditions, whenever it rains, but more importantly, during spring thaw. Corrective action, we need to do that to reduce the storm water inflow and infiltration from entering the sanitary system. The town and Aqua are now investigating a long-term plan or a strategy to improve this and to reduce the INI. In the EA budget, we included 250,000 dollars to do improvements. Mark my words, 250,000 is not a lot of money for the fixes, but that's what we put in there. So we're saying, let's remove this from the project, and we'll scope, because right now, we can't do this work, because there could be 10 or 15 things to do. We don't know what they are yet. We need a better understanding, so we get the best bang for the buck. There's probably some low-hung apples that we can get to get better use of the money that you got. Let's not spend money now and do the wrong thing. So this is going to be pulled out, and we're going to create, the town with Aqua, we're going to create a separate project undertaking, and they'll identify and prioritize the improvements that give the highest return on investment. So reducing INI is not going to be done in one shot, it's going to be a long-term undertaking. It could take five years, it could take 10 years, it could take longer, but every year, the idea is, you just chip away at it and reduce it. And you want to match the improvements with the budget that you got. If you allocate 250,000 for next year, that's what you do. If a coming year, you get more money, you free up 500,000, then you do it the coming year. So now we add it all up. So the goal, as I mentioned before, we're trying to get this down to the 6 million dollar range. We identified approximately 3.55 million in savings. We need to find more savings. We're trying to find another 250,000, and that'll get us into about 6.3 million range. So we're getting around to it. We had a meeting today with representatives from the construction industry who have experience in building in this area, and in particular, constructing on Highway 66 and Archer Drive, and they gave us some other ideas to look at. So we're pretty comfortable here, we can put forward some more ideas of saving money. So that's where we're standing now, we're getting close to this target, we're not quite there yet. So our next steps in the schedule, in June, we want to come back with recommendations of deferring scope, maybe tweaking the design to get this back on budget, and give you the opportunity to say yea or nay of what do you want to do, and the implications of the cost. We're going to finish this design in July. We have provincial approvals due in August. I'm saying tender in August, but I think we'll tender earlier. The feedback we got today is, you're better off tendering earlier to get contractors to commit to a bid price, because if there's quite a few projects coming this summer, and you're at the end of those projects, you're not going to get as competitive a pricing. So let's go at the beginning of it and get out there sooner on the street, and then we will not award a contract, sign off that contractual agreement, until we get approvals. And contractors will be okay with that. So that gives us, making sure we get the best competitive price. We want to start construction in September, let's say the fall. We're hearing from the contractors that they would probably work through the winter. There are some parts of this job that's better done in the winter. So they, there's a cost savings there. We have to be construction complete by fall of 2021. We're targeting September, because that's the grant funding limit, the deadline for grant funding. Questions? I went through pretty quick on that. If there's questions, I can go back through some slides.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I have a number of questions. First off, how did adding the servicing of the residents and buildings along Highway 66 get into the project? I remember when council approved this project, and it was made quite clear that that was not going to be the case. So how did that get added? And when did it get added? And why were we not told about it?
Bear with me. Through the environmental assessment process, we have to go to the public. We put out, there's a few things that we did. We had public meetings, of course. We also put out questionnaires along everybody, within the study area, and the feedback that we got is, people asked, if there is a pipe coming across the front of our road, we may want to connect into it. So it caused us to go asking the questions, and we asked the questions. We're bound to it because of the Class EA process, and that's the feedback we got. It doesn't necessarily mean you have to do it, and the thinking is here, the EA is good for 10 years.
Okay. Now, the other question, and I'm not sure you're the right person to ask. I know in sovereign township, when they forced sanitary sewers on residents along, near Lake Koochachang, each resident was charged a surcharge for five years or whatever to pay for that service. Do we have that option? And I'm not recommending this option, because a whole election was fought over it, but is that an option that we have to pay for that? Like I say, I'm not sure who I'm asking, but Eve?
It's actually, we've gone through a project like that before, and when you, when you pay taxes and you're, you don't have the services, you pay less taxes because you don't have those services. So what you have to do is a local improvement, and you have to have the, you have to have these residents or property owners vote if they want to go ahead with this project. I think you have, you need 55%, 51%, I'm not sure. And then that is added to their taxes. So they actually foot the bill for this project. So you could, you could reapply later on for a project, if that's what you want, but it's a long, it's a long process, could take a couple of years to get approval, to get the design in place, and, and then if you're able to get a grant, then if you're, it's only 33% they have to pay, you would, you would charge, it would go by property evaluation, and you would charge those, those properties their equal amounts in property value over 20, 25 years, whatever the loan you take, whatever the conditions, if you take 25-year loan. So you would pay that 33% over the 25-year loan.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that.
I guess the other thing with that, Rick, we don't know what the potential income is, but that could open up some new lots in that territory that not, it's just bush right now. So that potential would be there as well.
I'm not necessarily saying it's a bad idea, I'm just saying that this sort of, it came out of nowhere. Now, now, we have, we have a couple of choices. We can defer it for a while, or, you know, what are our other options? And obviously, one of our other options is, if they want the service, then they pay to have that service. So I just wanted to make sure on that. These insulated pipes, have they been used over the long term this far north?
We asked, we asked a question now of one of the contractors, in this particular case, we spoke to Pedersen. They've installed at a number of installations in the last few years, several years. We've installed them down south, they've been installed up north, the installation's done in Quebec, so it's fairly cold market. It has been installed, they're getting a lot of success with it. We haven't had any that I'm aware of, we've been asking, nobody's come forward with problems. So the best, right now, it looks good.
Yeah, okay. No, I just want to make sure that, you know, that, I mean, it's a new, relatively new product, I assume.
Eurocon out of Quebec's been doing it for a number of years.
Yeah. So are we aware of places this far north where it's been installed for, say, 10 years? Because that would give us a good weather cycle? I mean, we had a very mild winter this year, but we've also had very cold winters. And I guess my concern, and, and, you know, it sounds great, and I'm all in favor of saving money, don't get me wrong, but we're not burying it as deep. The frost on a cold winter is going to go deeper. I mean, one year, we had a lot of cracked basements in this town, people that had had their houses for 40, 50, 60 years and never had a problem. So my question- So, my question is, is this, is this product good enough to stand up to one of those winters?
Okay, two, two parts to that. First, we don't necessarily going to do the whole length shallow with insulated pipe, we're only going to do it when there's rock, and it's just too expensive to remove the rock, so there's a payback to do this, there's a benefit, there's a compromise about the risk. Feedback we've been getting, that it's been successful, there's quite a few years of experience, what I'll do is, I know there's some installed in this area, so what we'll do is, how about this, we'll get a list of municipalities that have them, let's say, ten years, and we'll start calling them.
Great. Now, my next question is also related, let's say we have a major failure in that line, what happens? Like, what happens to the people in Swastika?
Uh, unrelated to insulated pipe, if it isn't insulated or non-insulated, if it fails, you gotta fix it, if it's insulated, you can still fix it.
Yeah.
Um, essentially, what's gonna hap, it's, well, it's like you lose your water main to Swastika, if you lose that water main, they don't have water.
Okay.
If this pipe breaks, it has to have an emergency repair, could it be done in twenty-four hours, possibly? And that time, there is a mechanism, there is the piping in place, it's not the right thing to do, but we can bypass, either we have a choice here, we either bypass to the river and accept the pollution going into the river, or we put it into trucks and tanker trucks, and we haul it back to Kirkland Lake.
And one third question about this piping, does that mean that our current water crews will have to receive more training in order to learn how to deal with this piping? They're used to dealing with traditional piping?
There might be a little bit, it's still the same PVC piping, bell and spigot, except it's insulated.
Okay.
You strip off the insulation, you're just gonna...
Okay, so, it's not a big deal?
Correct.
Okay. I have another...
Actually, let me ask, we'll ask the question of the list that we get, of reference municipalities of problems that they've had, and how they've resolved them, if there was, be it training or, or implications in emergency repairs.
Okay. I think that's all for now, Mr. Yewership?
Okay. Going along with Rick's line of questioning and going back, Eve might want to respond. There was some discussion about private property owners and commercial being able to hook into the system. It didn't sound like at that time that it was a big issue to do that. That option would always be open, or was there, is, is it a bigger issue than, than I think?
Um, let's say those properties at sixty-six and one-twelve in particular, what we looked at, there's two options available. We looked at the idea of putting in a local sewer, and collecting everything, and bringing it back to the pumping station, and then pumping it through the same pipe that we're building. That is traditional way of doing it. The other option could be as individual septic tank failures or talbot failures, properties that have a real problem, and they're in a bind, they could get a grinder pump system and pump it directly into this force main. So, those, there's a cost to it. You're probably looking at a house, you might be looking five, seven and a half thousand for that, for that grinder pump setup, and then you got maybe a one-inch line going to the, to the water, to the new pipe on the road with, just like a water main connection. So, maybe it's a ten thousand dollar connection, maybe more, depending where you widen, where they're at. So, if they get in a jam, there is a solution for them.
Yeah, but it's still a reasonable cost.
Compared to septic tank and talbot, yeah.
Sorry, I did have one more question, and it's either for Eve or for the mayor. Did we not just approve a study being done to help us determine where this extra water's coming in in Swastika? Was that not what we just approved a couple of meetings ago?
That is for, to complete the, there was a, there was a condition in the environment study when you built the water plant, so that's a condition to be restored.
But is that not also to determine where the extra water's coming in? Is that not...
It is to make the order, but not the...
So, two things that happened, when, when the plant got built five years ago, six years ago, there was a five-year requirement that a report had to be prepared, so coupled, we're gonna do that report. And at the same time, Ministry of Environment knows that we're doing this job, and the feedback we got from them is the sewage plant here at Kirkland Lake, it also experiences very high peak flows. Now, their question is, okay, if you're gonna send flows from Swastika, when you're having a high flows at Kirkland Lake, what happens? So, we're going through now the analysis of one, how big are the peak flows coming here, and they are large.
Yeah.
And now, we're going through some computer modeling to find out what happens with this sewage plant, can it handle it? What was the original design intended for, and then can it handle it? So, we're trying to figure out, how much can it handle, how much is coming in? So, that's really what that's for, not to go back into the system, but it's a valid point that you gotta look at the INI at Swastika, and you gotta look at the INI coming here at Kirkland Lake, because you've got two different systems, each with a problem.
Yeah, and it, and I think all the councils well aware that that's been a problem, and that's been a problem for many years, and it's probably not a simple solution, it's probably a multi-year project because of the age of our infrastructure, and I suspect there's numerous sources of this extra water coming into the system, it's not like, you know, fixing one line, I, I think we're looking at multiple fixes here, so, and it's something that, that we have to do down the road, but yeah, now is the right time to look at Swastika, so that hopefully, we don't have to spend the extra money for the bigger pumps and everything else. I agree with that, thank you.
One thing I can add is, another reason for doing the plan is, get me wrong here, what's the best way to, to spend your money to get the most bang for the buck? But to get the plan in place also, because if grant funding comes down, grant funding becomes available, you can get some grant funding for doing these fixes, you might as well get the plan in ready now, so that when it does happen, you can jump out of it.
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, the three hundred thousand dollars in safety upgrades, I, to use just the blanket term of safety upgrades, so what I would prefer to see actually is like, what are the hazards, what are the risks associated, and what controls to put in place to avoid that? Because we have policies in place, so if you're identifying three hundred thousand dollars worth of spending for safety upgrades, what were the hazards, what were the risks, not just safety, right? It's really broad term.
We got about thirty pages of items that we described in a memo. Okay. So, put that in action. Okay. Yeah, we've, we went through, just so you know, we looked at the, there's, there's a whole bunch of codes involved here, the fire code, the building code, NFPA codes, and we identified through, we inspected it, went through the design drawings, went through the sites, and identified where all the, well, all the gaps are. Now, they met the code in their time, but they don't meet today's codes, and we've long listed everything, put some dollar values to it.
Just safety's a blanket term, and I would like to see the facts behind what those are, so.
Understood.
Any other comments or questions? We have a resolution to accept the report.
So, a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Dennis Perrier, be it resolved that the presentation from StanTech regarding the decommissioning of the Swastika Water Pollution Control Plant and Pump to KL sanitary system design and construction be received.
All in favor? Acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
I have a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Dennis Perrier, that council approve the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the Police Service Board meeting held February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, minutes of the regular meeting of council held February eighteenth, twenty-twenty, minutes of the Kirkland Lake Public Library Board held January twenty-third, twenty-twenty, minutes of the Museum Advisory Committee held January fifteenth, twenty-twenty, and minutes of the TPR Committee of Management held November eighteenth, twenty-nineteen.
Any questions? All in favor? Passed. Reports of municipal officers and communications, Director of Community Services, Bonnie Sakreter?
The first report is the Crossing Guard Management Contract. So, back early in January, there was direction from council to do an RFQ for Crossing Guard Management. This did go out, and the director and the CAO did review submission, the successful proponent was Pads K nine. They are currently the company that is doing our bylaw enforcement in Kirkland Lake, they also do Crossing Guard Management for the city of Timmins. They did commence on February twenty-fourth, so just last week, we haven't heard anything from anyone since then, so to us, that's good news, because we hear from Crossing Guards daily. And for the duration of the contract, in the RFQ, it's for the rest of this year, for the following two school years, and with an option to renew for another year after that. We do believe that the budgeted costs will be less than, will not be any more than what we have budgeted in the past, with able to give the same service, and we have deferred the liability to another organization, which does bode well, since we were unable to provide the service based on staffing problems. Any questions?
Counselor Owen?
Did we get more than one bid on this?
We did not.
We did not, okay. And the Crossing Guards that we had in our employ?
They all are.
Did they transfer over?
Yes, they all did.
Good, great, thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Yep, I'm in favor of this, liability is passed aside to a third party, and the costs associated with staff having to move around to fill those positions are avoided, and they can spend more time doing what their role is, so I'm all in favor of this, this transfer.
Bonnie, is it correct that, is it Timmins that are already using this firm?
Correct, yes.
And you've got good reports from...
Yes, we did reference checks with the clerk from the city of Timmins, who looks after the Crossing Guard Management there, and he has had no problems whatsoever. They've, they've only been in existence with them for a year, but for the last year, they've had no issues.
Okay.
We did do reference checks with other places that they also employed, however, none of them were Crossing Guard services. So, we did do, with our, with our own Department of Public Works, as well as with the mine where they provide security.
Any further comments, questions? That's coming back as a bylaw? No? Or a motion?
A motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Dennis Perrier, be it resolved that the awarding RFQ twenty-twenty dash oh-one Crossing Guard Management Services Report be received.
All in favor? Manager of Land Development and Planning?
I think I have one more.
One more, sorry?
Yeah.
I missed it. Recreation Committee.
So, on February eleventh, we had our first PRAC committee meeting of twenty-twenty, and there were nine members, including Counselor Adam, Counselor Perrier, Counselor Owen, were in attendance, and there were three staff members there. So, we do have some recommendations. The meeting took about an hour and a half, a number of items were discussed, I just put the highlighted bullet points of what was discussed, if you would like any more further information on the items, we can certainly answer them, and the councils, I'm sure, could jump in as well. Three of the items are coming to council tonight. So, the first one is modification of terms of reference. So, the terms of reference were passed originally by council March twenty-ninth, twenty-nineteen, and just in order to fit the new committee structure, there was just a few items that perhaps could be tweaked. So, I've just handwritten on the, the PDF version. So, with the new committee system, the two counselors will be appointed by the mayor, as opposed to up to three counselors. And on the last page, the other option that we have to add is that subsequent to the PRAC meetings, Parks and Recreation Advisory Staff will prepare a report for the following committee, the whole meeting, the report will be presented by the primary council representative with support from staff. So, this time, because we are doing a transition from counselors, I've done the report, but in the future, the counselors that have been named to this committee are Chair Stacy White and Second Dennis Perrier.
Counselor White?
So, I believe that there's some confusion with these new meetings, because it was my understanding that with these committees that we've been having, it was during the day with staff, more like a staff meeting than a committee of the whole situation. It was never intended to change our public committees. I, for instance, sit on museum and library and planning, that doesn't take away from me sitting on the other boards, where with this, these changes tonight appear to change our public committees, which it wasn't really meant to, because I don't know who decided that I am now on this committee. I, like, I don't understand, were Rick and Patrick asked to be removed? I don't understand why we're changing the public committee for something that was meant separately. Is there any...
Could we have Eve respond?
So, if you... Remember, just before Christmas, we introduced these, these committees so that we could have representation in every department, like Public Works, and so what we found is that there, there's some duplication. So, in Recreation, for example, you had five members of council on that committee, there was name on that committee, so you could actually have a, it could be a council meeting, but I, I thought on the list, there was five named.
Oh, three plus mayor?
Three, four, okay, three plus mayor, even at, at four, you could have a council meeting. So, so...
Yeah, as members, as you...
Yeah, but you could show all four, and that would be an official council meeting. So, rather than do that, we'll, we said we're gonna take two members off and put them in other functions, because we didn't have a Public Works Committee, and we didn't have certain committees, we tried to form a committee in every department, which I think we've run, run almost every department now, we've had Public Works meetings, so, so everyone has two committees to attend, one that they're chair, and one that they're, they're second on the committee. But whether, it's really, I think, up to Mayor Pat to, I, I guess, talk with his counselors to see what their interest is, and since Rick has started now, our new CEO, maybe he's gonna have a different view of this. So, I suggest there'll be, before we make any changes, Megan was looking at all those committees, there's some committees that need to be implemented, there's no, you want to implement maybe a negotiating committee, things like that, take a couple of weeks and to try and get all this together and bring it back to council. I think since Rick may have his say on how he likes things done, I did stuff how I thought I, I would try and bring people together, that was the reason, I was trying to bring staff in, but don't want to duplicate either, so, so the reason, that's a bit different, is because we have members of the public, but I can't see anything wrong with that, I, I thought it was a really good meeting, it was a really good meeting that we had.
I, I think it, it has gotten a bit confused, and I don't think, I think we need to think this one out a little bit further and defer it, and with the new CAO, get his thoughts on it as well.
Yeah.
Certainly, I know the existing members that are on there enjoyed the, being on those committees, and didn't exactly, weren't contacted beforehand to say that they were going to be taken off, so I, I can understand where they're coming from, and I, I agree. So, I think we're better off deferring, making this change, and have another look at it.
Yes.
I agree.
Are you in agreement to that? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, no, I just, I just... Just wanted to clarify one thing for Stacy. I was not notified, nor was I asked, but in all fairness, I did not object to being taken off the Recreation Committee, and I'll tell you why. The day of the Recreation Committee, that was my third committee meeting that afternoon, and as I, as you're well aware, I have other things going on in my life that are quite stressful. So, I mean, there is a point where burnout comes into play for even counselors, even though it's supposed to be a part-time job, and that's why I didn't object, because I felt, you know, like if it happened again, and, and life is going on, you know, I have some ongoing situations to deal with, it's not fair to the ratepayers if I can't give a hundred percent. So, no, I wasn't asked, no, I didn't agree, but I did not object to being taken off, I was quite comfortable with that.
Well, I think we do need more discussion on this, it, as time went on, since we first talked about it, Eve, I know I've had second thoughts about...
about it, I mentioned it to you. I think we, there's, there's a number of items that I think we have to clarify, and weigh the, the cost, time costs against the benefits, so I'm not convinced one way or the other. It, it is just, are we just adding another layer of governance? That's my concern. Counselor Adams.
Yep, I want to stay on the rec committee. I've been, wanted to be a part of it from the start, help do fit this program in, add an extra hour to swim times on Saturday, try and get the complex open for holidays, and use the complex every weekend with my kids, so I would like to stay, so hopefully. Thank you.
Okay, so are we okay on the deferment?
Yeah.
Yeah, and Rick will get a chance to have some input as well. Sound fair?
Excellent.
Okay, okay. Counsel, Counselor Owen.
Do we need to vote to defer then? Or can we just verbally say we're deferring it? I think we need to vote on this.
Well, I have a motion here to refer back to staff in general, but Bonnie also has other things in her report, so I don't think we're finished yet.
Oh, okay.
Unless.
No, carry on, Bonnie.
Certainly.
I cut you short earlier.
That's all right. I'll try to speak faster. The next item is the ability and cost to be open on statutory holiday, so that has brought, gotten brought up a few times in the past. So when we're looking at whether we can be open on a stat holiday, there's a couple of things to consider. So first of all, we have current legislation, we have the Employment Standards Act, and we have our collective agreement for QB 26. So they both allow for us to be open on a statutory holiday, so we just have to follow the rules. So what the rules are, is that staff have to be asked in, they have to agree in writing to work on a statutory holiday. If we were to be open, we'd be looking at having a front desk attendant, we would need an operator for the facility, and we would need a custodian as our full-time staff, and then we could staff the rest with part-time. That would be our lifeguards and things like that. So they would have to be asked, that, that goes with employment standards, if they agreed, we would put it in writing, and they would agree to work that. Then there's the area of pay. So basically, between both employment standards and the current collective agreement, if you're going to pay someone to work on a stat, you're paying them the pay for the holiday plus premium pay, which is time and a half. So it's basically double time and a half, that includes the, the amount for benefits as well. So it's doable. We have had conversations in past years about being open on some stat holidays, very different staff than what we have now. At the time, there was not an appetite for staff to work, but we didn't even have Family Day in the next, and I know that's the one that has the most interest. So not saying it can't happen, we just have to make sure we follow process. When you're looking at what is it really going to cost us, so a couple of different scenarios. So the reason I have different rates here, so a regular day of work, if we were to call it a regular day of work, so let's take Family Day, for example, since it just passed, and this is one that seems to get talked about. The total pay, including the premium pay, would be about $3,200, a little bit more than that. Premium pay only, the reason I put that is we have to pay them for that day anyways. Like, we're paying them for that statutory holiday, if it's a full-time employee to stay home. So if we're, so if you just pay the premium pay, the difference is about $2,500. The other option we have is we could schedule in excess of their regular 40-hour, a work, work week, and they would work at extra hours, and I'm suggesting about, you know, if we open from about 10 till 3, we could probably do about three hours in the pool, we could do a tunis skate, you could probably stick a pickup hockey in there for youth, so you'd get pretty good use of the facility. And we could do that when you take the regular payout for just about $2,100. So if there's something that council is interested in, then we would add to our budget, so you'd, you'd have to let us know what days you're looking at for us to be open out of the 13 stats, the 13, not stats, the 13 holidays identified in the collective agreement, and then we would make sure that we budget for it, whether it's 2020 for anything that's remaining, or if we want to wait until 2021. And we are, if, if we're looking at 2020, we do need to make some decisions tonight, because we're doing budgets now. If we're waiting till 2021, we have time to think about it. Ideally, we'd make a decision tonight.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, I know Eve had some ideas, and we're currently in negotiations on that contract, right?
It finishes April 30th.
Okay, so now is the time, if we want to make changes, to work it into the negotiations. And Eve mentioned something about floaters or, anyways, if, if I could ask Eve to come up and explain how that works, because I'm not sure I have a good handle on how it works, but it's an, it's an option that we could look at and, and possibly negotiate into the contract.
Especially if we have the opportunity, because as we said, our contract finishes in April, we could ask and try and negotiate that to see if, if some employees from recreation would take a couple floaters, but we'd still have to decide how many holidays you would like that to happen. If we come up with three, and then we ask for three floaters, so we actually just defer their day off to a different day. So it's cheaper that way, and that tactic works sometimes, sometimes it doesn't, but it's the perfect time, we're there now with the negotiation, so that might be something we want to negotiate, and usually, it's, it's not too much of a problem, usually.
And if I can add to that, I, I think we do recognize that in, if you could scroll, like down, I guess, if I could see the top of the page, that's what I'm trying to say. Yeah, so 13.05 is currently in our collective agreement, and it does give us the opportunity to, for four different days, Remembrance Day, Thanksgiving, Canada Day, and Victoria Day, we can substitute it for another day. So I think that's what we'd be looking at, adding.
Add the Family Day.
Adding Family Day, or whatever other day.
Whatever you choose.
To that verbiage, so I think it's, it's very easy, because that verbiage is in there. There's still going to be the costs, though. It's just that it makes it easier, and it's right in the collective agreement. So we're still paying premium pay, but on a different day.
Bonnie, there hasn't been any mention of increased revenue, which we would be getting for these days, and, and secondly.
Absolutely.
The cost itself, to me, is not outrageous, and we do very little outside marketing, and it is a bit of a marketing effort, because if you get more people coming, they, if they come once a year, the first time they've come out, they will be back once they've used that facility, because it's a fantastic facility. My daughter and two grandkids, every time they, they come to town, they went there once, and they want to go there every time they're here, so we are going to get, it's a good marketing ploy, not a ploy, but opportunity. Counselor Adams.
Yeah, so just on the agenda item, this, that, individual counselor, but something that's not mentioned in here is that at the February 11th meeting, a motion was passed by the rec committee, making the recommendation to have this, so it was actually a committee as a whole that recommended this as well. So seeing that Victoria Day's in here, that's even a day to even consider for 2020, if it's already in there.
Yeah.
And you can just sub that one out. So for $2,100, I believe, what we budgeted for this year for integrity commissioner was $10,000 for counselors and $20,000 for mayors, so minus $2,100 out of one of those items is easily enough to pay for it, but that's not including if we were to get it sponsored, right? If you were to get sponsored, get multiple sponsors. I know in the past, it's been said that goes against the sponsorship feelings, something like that, but if the community wants people to stay in the community, to support the local businesses, I think people can come together and understand that one, but I'm in favor of having it open for certainly 2021, but a Victoria Day is a possibility for this year, because snow will probably still be here, not much activity is going to be happening, and people will be looking for something to do with their families, so that's a, it's a great day.
Counselor White.
So I just wanted to mention, while I was looking into this, I discovered that Heritage North and the museum can be rented on stat holidays. I don't know if anybody in the public really cares, but I just thought it was a point of interest that you can rent these two town facilities on stat holidays for an extra 25%. Thanks.
Counselor White, or Counselor Owen, sorry.
Okay, I'm a little deeper voiced than Counselor White, and she has more hair. Family Day, as a former salesman, that's the easiest sell for corporations. I mean, what corporation doesn't want to promote Family Day? Personally, I don't like these sponsorships, because we take in less revenue than we would if, okay, let's say we have 200 people show up to the pool, if we're charging them individually, we're taking in a lot more money. If we have 200 people show up to the pool, and we got Joe Blow Construction Company sponsoring it, we get a fixed rate, so, but nonetheless, in long term, the more we get people into the pool, the more likely we are to get them back, and like, I know, I heard from a lot of people about Family Day, about the, the department being closed, or the, the Joe being closed, and, and I think, you know, I mean, we're pretty tight with the town's money, and I think this is a place that we could loosen up the purse strings, you know, I mean, it's not a huge amount, and if we want to go with corporate sponsors, so be it. I mean, like, Family Day would be the easiest, I think, because corporations love to say they're family-friendly, even if, well, whatever, we'll leave it at that.
I agree. So Counselor Ivanov.
Yeah, I also agree. I think it's a great idea. I think, I'm not sure about the ice surface, though. I think, I mean, does that, does that bring the cost down a bit, Bonnie, if you take away the ice surface, if you don't have a tunis skate, or, and just use the, because a pool is really the attraction, I think, on a day like Family Day, or, you don't think so? I do, I think it's just, you know, it'd be, that's what you want to promote, that's the, that's our, our, our big winner right now at the complex.
Counselor Owen.
Oh, good, we got it right. Eugene, obviously, you're not a skater.
No, I'm just thinking about economics. You know, when you look at it, what are you, what are you trying to promote, and what are you going to do with it? And does it, if it brings the cost down substantially, I'm not sure what it's going to do, but you're not looking at a Zamboni operator. I know you have to have an operator there anyway, but it's, does that bring the cost down?
It wouldn't adjust the cost very much. It would be the cost of.
Doesn't make any difference.
And what I'm looking at is a grandfather, and, well, when my kids were younger, I, I had one kid that was a swimmer, and had two that were hockey players, right? So if we can offer the rink and the swimming pool, even though it's a swimming pool, we really want to pump up and get used, for some parents, that's a blessing, because now they got, you know, one of the kids at the rink doing what he likes, and you got one in the pool doing what they like. So I, I think we should open the whole facility.
If economically it doesn't change anything, then.
Not much difference.
Why not?
Counselor Perrier.
I'm just wondering why, why the operating hours just from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m., why wouldn't it be an eight-hour day?
That was a suggestion to keep the cost lower. If we did the eight-hour day, it would be the first example, so it's up, it's, it's, anything goes. We could do, we, I mean, we're typically open 19 hours a day, on a regular day.
Yeah, okay.
So we could do an eight hours, our operators work 10s, our custodians work 10s, our desks work 8s, I mean, when you're doing a premium day, it can be however you'd like to program it.
So you're looking for direction on that today, Bonnie?
If you'd like to do some for 2020. I mean, if, if you want to do Victoria Day for 2020, and mull over what you'd like for hours, you can. I can add that to the budget, I can add a couple to the budget.
I think that's a good idea.
So if we added two stats for 2020, we evaluate, see how they go, and then we determine for 2021. Okay. And the only other question I have is, is, am I also looking for corporate sponsors?
Yeah.
And is that in, in addition to fee for service?
No.
Corporate sponsor, and it's free? I, I just, I need to know.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of corporates. I know it's less money for the town, but part of this is promotion, part of it's revenue, with no fee for service, and there's reasons for that, and Pat and I were at a, a meeting yesterday, and I won't go into details, but it had to do with people that couldn't afford to use facilities like the complex, so if we get an opportunity to have a corporate sponsor, and these people get to take their kids where all the other kids get to go, you know, I, I think we should go that route.
Counselor Ivanov.
Rick may be wrong about the, the revenue, because I know that, what are the, Family Day is, what a $5,000 sponsorship, or it was anyway, at the college, so, you know, I mean, if you get somebody who sponsors at, at that level.
Yes.
You may not be, maybe substantially more income.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, that'd be great, if we can do it, but don't we have set rates for sponsorship, Bonnie?
It's not that we have a set rate for sponsorship, what we've done is we've used the rental rate for a sponsor, so if it's $150 an hour to rent the pool with all the lifeguards, that's what the sponsor pays for that one hour. So if we'd be looking at three hours, it'd be $450. So that's, that's the model we've used in the past. We haven't, we haven't ever asked a sponsor for.
Twenty-five hundred bucks or something.
Yeah, I mean, that's an option, but that would have to come from council, the direction.
Counselor Adams.
I, I'm on the fence of pay per use with sponsorship, based on just trying to get that cost down as much as possible. I think they, people can understand that we're trying to do this to keep families in the community, and even with corporate sponsorship, they can help. So I'm on, I, I would be in favor of corporate sponsorship with pay, pay per use on that one, to try and just even get that cost as low as we can.
Counselor Owen.
If, it all depends how we market it, whether I think we should go with the rental rate or a higher fee. If a company's going to be able to attach their name to it, and we promote it as such and such company's Family Day at the complex, okay, and we promote it, and everything we put out, and everything we put on the radio and in print has that company's name on it, there's added value for the company. And if we promote it that way, then I think, I, I'm okay with charging a higher fee. If we're just, you know, just kind of saying, well, it's open, and it, you know, the, the sponsor's sort of an afterthought, then I think we should stick with the rental, but I think we have an opportunity here, if we promote it right, where, you know, I don't want to put any one company's name there, but, you know, what company wouldn't love to have the community think, wow, they're so nice, they got the pool open for us, they got the, the arena open for us, and they're promoting family values. I mean, that's worth a lot of money to a company. I'm not saying we supercharge, but I think we could go higher.
Bonnie, we're kind of going around the circle here now, you, you might be getting dizzy. How about next council meeting, you come back?
Yeah.
Just lay out the, the options, and we'll make a decision then, but.
That's fine.
We want to do something.
No problem.
We're going to get dizzy.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rick.
The last item that we have on this report is lobby advertising. So what you'll see in the package is the original report to council that was back in 2015, from Wilford Haas at the time, also the agreement and the bylaw. So in the lobby of the complex, we have two display boards, they're digital, and it is an agreement with a company named Future Sign. One's a 55-inch and one's a 42-inch, not a 55-foot, sorry, as I look at my typo. And what they are, is they have static advertising display boards, and then they have rotating information that we have the ability to change on a daily basis. Very well-used, our patrons do refer to them a lot, and the contract is coming up at the end of June of this year. So because there's been some interest in this, we thought we'd bring it to council. You don't need to make a decision right now, but it's just to start to think about, in the original contract, there is the option to renew for an additional five years if both parties agree, so that's one route you can go. If you want to go a different route, it would, could go to an RFP. Are you looking at, this would be for a user group, this would be for a marketing company, this would be for a downtown business, so it's things that you may want to mull around. I just want to, as I said, it does not need to be decided tonight, but it's something that, if there's interest in changing, we probably should have some discussion, see what, what route we'd like to go.
Counselor Adams.
Yeah, this was discussed at the Recreation Committee, pretty much in death a couple times, so that money is like leaving the community to this company that has it. So if we have the opportunity to have that board ourselves, and I'll promote the services within our community and the businesses, that money can hopefully stay within the community, so that's the direction I would probably like to head on this item.
Was there any discussion with, with the user groups at all? I know when we first put this in, there was some negative aspects to it from their standpoint.
So at the rec committee meeting, it was, it was brought up from a representative?
No, but I mean, when we originally.
Oh, I, I don't recall if at council, anyone delegated back in 2015. I don't believe so. I don't, I don't have a recollection of a user group saying, yea or nay.
I believe Kirkland Lake, the gold miners did.
At council?
They certainly corresponded with us about it.
Okay. I don't recall at council.
It might be worth just having a chat with them, just to see where they're at, I, not trying to stir up the pot, start all over again, but it was a bit of a concern. I don't think it's a. But it was a bit of a concern. I don't think it's affected their board advertising, which they get revenue from. That was their concern at the time. But it would be worth just touching base with them, letting them know.
And I have spoken to their executive about this, and so they knew this was coming to council as the start of a discussion. They were happy with that. I think they would like to have more advertising ability. Um, right now, their contract is arena advertising. We don't have full facility advertising. We don't have,
No.
Um, the pool does have the Aquatic Club doing advertising. That was council-approved as well. And then we have the gold miners in the arena. So we haven't, the lobby has not been with the user group in the past. That's why it may want some discussion. I, at the time that the original, um, agreement came to council, there was no one local that could provide the digital-type advertising. So from our, that's a benefit to us, that we have the content to change, um, on a, on a daily basis. So that's something we can look at. Is there anyone el- is there anyone locally that can provide the same? I, I'm not aware, but I would have to do some digging.
Uh, Counselor Owen?
Personally, I'd be in favor of doing it all in-house, and the money going to gen- general revenue. Um, we have IT people with the town. I'm sure they could figure out how to program those signs. Yes, there would be an initial cost, but we have to look at all sources of revenue. And, um, I think the setup now is fair. Uh, the gold miners have advertising in the arena. The swim team has advertising in their area. And, you know, we have to look at, at all possible sources of revenue. So, yeah, there's going to be an initial cost, there's going to be a training period, but there's no reason our IT people can't handle doing that. And, uh, I don't know, maybe it's the Economic Development Department that sells the advertising, but let's keep the, all that revenue right here with the town.
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, so based on the agreement, we get a thousand dollars, and the place that operates it gets, uh, all the advertising dollars for themselves. So we get a thousand dollars. Uh, we have the system at work. It's a slideshow presentation on TV. You hit play, and you can see all your sponsors. So, I'll do that if you want, but.
You're not getting clear direction here.
Yeah. We're talking.
We're, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you'd like me to come back with options to keep it local?
Yes.
An RFP. So formulate an RFP to bring back, probably in April, to go out for lobby advertising?
No, no.
No?
That's not what I was saying.
Okay, sorry.
Counselor Owen?
I don't think we're at that point yet, because, like I say, I'd like to see it done in-house, and all the revenue come back to the town. Now, I don't know whether the rest of council agrees with me or not, and if they don't, that's fine. But I'm looking at generating as much possible revenue out of that building as we can, and having it go back into our general account, not into a specific area.
Okay, sorry. So I will bring back then,
Yep.
information on how we could do it in-house as an option for council. Thank you.
So before I give you the hook here?
Am I good?
So I have a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Dennis Perrier. Be it resolved that the Recreation Committee briefing report be received, and that the Recreation Committee briefing be referred back to staff.
All in favor? Passed. Manager, land development and planning, Ashley Billardal?
Just a quick report today. You guys are off the hook. Uh, we received a request to purchase for Forty Swastika Avenue in Swastika. Uh, in order for me to bring the request to council for consideration, I need to have the land declared surplus. So this piece of land is a forty-by-hundred lot that is undeveloped. The individual who would like to purchase it lives next door, uh, and it is an undevelopable lot. Um, it's, it would be very difficult to service, and is heavily sloped. So all I'm asking for is a resolution to be passed that declares this piece of property surplus, so it can be brought to a council meeting in the future for consideration for sale.
Comments, questions?
Thank you.
I have a motion moved by Dennis Perrier, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that council receives a report from Ashley Billardal regarding the deeming of Forty Swastika Avenue, and that council declares Forty Swastika Avenue as surplus land.
All in favor? Passed. Here we go. Make it.
Okay, so I just have a quick, more of a notice than a report. Um, we do have an open, and, well, it was an open investigation through our Integrity Commissioner. Um, they have since provided a report, but according to, um, their protocol, we have to give notice in an open meeting that it is coming the next meeting. So this is the notice that, on the March seventeenth agenda, we will have the report from the Integrity Commissioner. I do apologize, I have been in contact, or have been trying to be in contact with them to get exact dollar amounts, uh, but I have yet to, been given an answer, so I will hope to have that information for you, March seventeenth.
That's it. Counselor Owen?
Uh, the person that acted as the Integrity Commissioner, will she be here for that meeting?
I would be open to discussion for that. If you would like me to request her to be present or not, um, there would, of course, I would assume, be costs associated with her coming, so.
And that email that was sent out to us, is that her full report, or is that the calls and notes version?
I believe what you were emailed is just, um, like a letter. I don't think it was the full report. I think I, I have the full report, but.
Oh, you have a copy of the full report, so?
But I'm not allowed until this step, and then it has to come March seventeenth.
Okay, but now that you said it's going to be at our next meeting, as counselors, do we have access to that report now?
I'll have to touch base with her of her protocol. As far as I know, I know that it's just supposed to come to the next meeting, so.
Okay.
Not knowing what the final report is, I, my gut feeling is, uh, having her come up here from Suze Sainte-Marie on the costs involved, and knowing what, I don't think it's anything significant, uh, what took place to begin with. I'm not really in favor of paying her to come up here. I'm not quite satisfied, uh, with the turnaround time that, uh, the Integrity Commissioner was involved in this, and to give, pay out further expenses, I'm not in favor of that. That's my own personal opinion. Counselor Adams?
Yeah, uh, Rick, for you to get the report before I do is kind of like insulting in a sense, like?
No, no, that's not what I was asking.
So, uh, September eleventh was that letter, I guess, that went to everybody. That's when it was dated. So to get it back in March is certainly something else. And then to, uh, pay for her to come up here, I don't think so. I will get the full report next meeting, and I look forward to it. And, uh, thanks staff for all their training on, uh, conflict of interest, and providing us with all that material. Very useful. Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Dennis Perrier. Be it resolved that the report from Megan Elliott Clerk regarding the notice of intent from the Integrity Commissioner to submit a report for consideration at the following regular meeting.
All in favor? Passed.
So I received correspondence from our, um, Library Board, that they're looking to fill a vacant seat. Um, so we have a request from Susan Darling to fill that position. And they, I was going to wait and do it through, um, the committee bylaw when we update it, but the Library Board said they do just need a motion confirming it from council, so.
Uh, Counselor White?
So up until this meeting here, um, items like that were discussed in camera prior to being brought forth. I don't know if there's really, um, a specific reason for that, but there is some, um, issues, um, with the location of this individual. She does not live within the municipality, from what I understand, or not. I don't know personally. However, we do have other members on other committees that don't live within the municipality. I have no issues with this individual joining the Library Board. It's a separate act, even though council appoints members to the board. It's a, it has its own Public Libraries Act. So I don't know if we should even be discussing this in open council first.
I, I have to agree. We did have some discussion, uh, Megan and I today on this. And, um, if there was some negative reason why we wouldn't want any particular person, uh, we wouldn't be discussing that at a public meeting. It would be in camera. So we have to go back to original policy and procedure, and that would be in camera. Perhaps we could do that tonight? Not, not on the agenda, no, okay.
So you would like me to defer?
Please.
Okay, so a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Dennis Perrier. Be it resolved that the correspondence from the, actually, sorry, actually, Stacy, I have a question for you. Their correspondence says Tech Centennial Library, but is it supposed to be Kirkland Lake? It is Tech Centennial?
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, so be it resolved that the correspondence from the Tech Centennial Library Board regarding a board member vacancy be referred back to staff for the next meeting.
All in favor? Counselor Owen?
Should it not be the next in-camera meeting, or the in-camera meeting scheduled on whatever date? Because next meeting would be bringing it back to an open meeting, and we're dealing with an identifiable person. And that's what we used before to move it in, in camera? I don't know, Rick. Is that the proper procedure?
Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Through you to council.
Yep.
Through you to council. So you have a number of options. You could, if you wish to, refer it to the closed session later in this meeting. And, and that's why the closed session component exists, so that if you had something that you wish to take in the closed session, in accordance with Section 239 of the Municipal Act, it provides you with that latitude. If you wish to defer it, I would recommend that you defer it to the March seventeenth closed session meeting of council, and then it's very clear direction as to where the clerk shall place it.
Counselor Owen?
You'll have to stick with me. I'm a new CIO. You don't realize how dumb I am. So I want you to confirm for me that we can actually add it to our in-camera agenda today.
Thank you, worship. Through you to council. So my recommendation would be, most definitely, the item is on the open session agenda. If there's a closed session component of an item that you wish to discuss at this meeting, you are well within your rights. And, uh, I haven't reviewed your procedural bylaw in detail, but I would say that almost every procedural bylaw supports that position.
Then I'd recommend that we defer to our in-camera session today.
I agree. Okay?
Do I still need a motion? Yes. So receive and refer to the closed session later on in the agenda as item number?
All right. Okay, so be resolved that the correspondence from the Tech Centennial Library Board regarding a board member vacancy be received, and that it be referred, or back to staff, or?
No, no.
Referred to the closed session?
Of this meeting.
Session of this meeting?
As item number?
As item number? Do we have the closed?
Six.
Five point three A.
All in favor? Passed. Thank you.
So we received correspondence from the, sorry, I can't find my mouse here.
Seizure and brain injury?
Center. Wishing to declare the month of March as epilepsy awareness month, and they have provided us with these purple ribbons, if you wish to pass them around and wear them.
Okay.
So I have a motion that says, moved by Stacy White, seconded by Dennis Perrier. Be it resolved that the correspondence from the seizure and brain injury center regarding epilepsy month be received.
All in favor? Passed.
So another little information item here. Um, the Chamber of Commerce does a People's Choice Awards, and for 2019, the town of Kirkland Lake was the winner in the government and community section. Just wanted to put that out there for everyone. Um, so there is a dinner that you can purchase tickets for. Um, it's on Thursday, April ninth, so if you're interested, you can contact the Chamber that way. So I have a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Dennis Perrier. Be it resolved that the correspondence from the Chamber of Commerce for the 2019 People's Choice Awards be received.
Just noting that, uh, Stacy White has volunteered to attend that meeting, uh, that dinner and, uh, awards night on my behalf. Uh, thank you. It's always a great night. It's nice, we're getting a little bit of recognition here. It's a pretty tough competition. Well, we did it. All in favor? Counselor Dennis Perrier? Technical Review Committee.
Okay, uh, Technical Review Committee. Uh, almost since, uh, my term as counselor, I've felt there was a need for a technical review committee in, in Kirkland. Uh, this committee is not meant to undermine the people, such as the department heads or procurement people. They are, that, that, to make it look like they are not doing their jobs. This committee is to aid these people in helping them do their jobs. While I believe these people are quite confident in a job, they cannot be familiar with every piece of equipment or every project that they are involved in. We want to make sure, if a proper decision is made for, for example, like new parts and purchasing new equipment. This does not just include things like loaders and trucks. It also could be instrumentation and electrical stuff, and anything else to do with the, our facilities. The committee would be made up of members of the town staff, council, and professional people with different fields of expertise. And like other committees, of course, they would make suggestions, and these suggestions would be brought to council to make the final decisions. They would be made up of volunteers, so there was no cost to the town. I believe that they could bring a huge saving to the town while providing the town with transparency, where the taxpayers' dollar is being used. Thank you.
Comments, Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, Dennis, I'm not sure, would it be hard to recruit volunteers for this committee?
How we do it, I would, I would think in the, the normal way. When we form a committee, we advertise it on our site.
Yeah. I'm just curious. I, I just wonder if somebody who's got that skill would be willing to sit around and be on a committee like that. I'm, it's a great idea if somebody's willing to do that. I just?
Yeah, I've, I've been doing some, some searching, and I've already come up with a couple of potential people who would be interested in doing it.
Interested.
And I don't think you'd need more than three or four.
No, absolutely, yeah.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with, with Dennis, because I know when stuff comes to council, we're often making decisions on hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we can't possibly have the expertise. And, um, our, our department managers, we can't expect them to know all the mechanical stuff or all the instrumentation stuff. Um, a suggestion I would make, that the department head, like, if they were considering, uh, something that had to do with the Physical Service Department, that that department head also be part of the committee on? that had to do with the physical service department, that that department head also be part of the committee on that decision. If they were deciding on something that had to do with the operation of the arena, then the recreation department head or designate, you know, it may be, and, and when I say head, it could be head or designate, because sometimes there may be other people within the department that would know more. But I think it's important, because as Dennis pointed out, this is not to undermine our staff. It's to help our staff. And I think by including them, that would be an added vote of confidence showing that, no, we're supporting you, we're not trying to undermine you.
In theory, it does sound good, I agree. I, I'd hate to jump in and see where we get into conflict with RFPs or bidding process and confidentiality. I think we need more information from, from our Public Works Department especially, to come back with a report with the recommendations and any concerns that they may have. So I prefer deferring a decision, I guess that's, until we have that information, that's my approach to it. I'm not saying that we shouldn't be doing it. I need more information to make an informed decision. Counselor White?
I definitely kind of support this. I think it adds to the transparency and accountability that you see with other boards or committees, or advisory committees rather, such as Parks and Rec and the museum, et cetera, that we're involved in. So I would like to investigate this further for sure. And if Dennis can draft up, like, what terms of reference would look like, and how the committee would, would function more in depth, hand in hand with our staff. I think it does kind of go into what we've been doing with our staff meetings with staff on these other committees. So I definitely think it, it could have a place. It's just how it's going to look at the end result that needs more hammering out.
I can do that if you want, that's the way council chooses to go. I know the, the people that, that I have in mind are very knowledgeable people, and I know they would make a very informed, non-biased decision. You would definitely want, would not want anybody who is involved, like, say if the manager of Medco or something like that, or something like that, you would not want any, anybody like that. But this meeting also could be open to, to anybody within the town, or even the public, I guess, for their input as well.
I think we need to put some terms of reference together and, and just get a little better feel for it, and bring it back to, have staff bring back a recommendation report. Are we okay with that? Counselor White, or Counselor, Counselor Owen? You look white.
You're lucky I'm a very liberal thinker. I think before staff comes back with a report, I think Dennis should come back with a more defined terms of reference, so then staff knows, has a better handle on what this committee's going to be.
Well, I think you're going to have to sit with somebody in Public Works and put the terms of reference together. That's part of the process.
That's what I was thinking there. If I can arrange a meeting with him to sit down and, just to get started, and then come back. People come back with.
Yeah, I agree. Go ahead, Eve.
I think it's also important to consider if you're going ahead with this, that we're going to be reworking our procurement policy. So it will have an impact on how we select contractors and how we proceed in purchasing things. So, so just to think of that aspect, that if we're going to rewrite the procurement policy, if we get in, into that committee, we'll, we'll have to incorporate that into, into that policy.
Yeah. Perhaps, Eve, I know you're, before we were releasing you to go to France, maybe you could sit in on that with Dennis?
Sure, sure.
Because I think you have a good insight for both, for both the views. Counselor White?
Yeah, I was just going to say, like, I know with the way the museum committee works is that we bring suggestions forward. We're not actually involved in any of the actual decisions that are made. We just say, hey, have we thought about this? Or, you know, so it might not even have to affect our procurement policy as much as just public feedback from experts in their field in, in town.
Yeah, we need the budget, our, call them the budget chief, but the treasurer to be involved in this somewhat too, because it does involve some of the procurement policies and the overall budget process. So Keith could certainly add some insight into that as well. So if we're okay with that, I think that'll work.
Well, I got a lot more time on my hands now since I've retired.
Congratulations on your retirement, Dennis.
He's looking for a job.
You're on full-time.
Okay, so I'm not really sure how you want to go about this now.
We'll put the fine tuning together.
No, but I mean.
Seeing that you're retired, we'll talk about.
Okay. I'll be in every morning.
You better get there before break. Okay.
So I'm just trying to rework the motion here. So moved by.
I probably signed it.
Is that Rick?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, sorry, I thought so. Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that the report from Counselor Dennis Perrier regarding the establishment of a technical review committee be received, and that council refers, or council directs Counselor Perrier to refer back with a report, or sorry, how much? To, that council, that council direct Counselor Perrier to work with staff and bring a report back?
Which would include terms of reference?
To include terms of reference. And should I say specifically Public Works and Finance Staff?
Okay. Do you want to reread that?
Okay. So be it resolved that the report from Counselor Dennis Perrier regarding the establishment of a technical review committee be received, and that council direct Counselor Perrier to work with Public Works and Finance Staff to bring back a report to include terms of reference.
All in favor? Passed. Thank you, Dennis. Thanks, Megan. Introduction reading and consideration of bylaws.
Okay, so the first bylaw listed is an amendment to the parking and traffic bylaw. We did hand out to you, there was an additional amendment made to the schedules. So to do this properly, there's a few motions in place to pass this bylaw with the provided documents. So the first motion is moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that bylaw 20-024 being a bylaw to amend by law 15-017 for the regulation of parking for the town of Kirkland Lake be read a first and second time.
All in favor? An amendment?
And then we do be, moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that bylaw 20-024 being a bylaw to amend by law 15-017 for the regulation of parking for the town of Kirkland Lake be amended by removing Schedule E and G and replacing with the new Schedule E and G as presented at this meeting.
All in favor? Opposed?
So is this for the community safety?
Request, well, cancel that vote. Questions? Adams?
Yeah, so I spoke with Ashley before. So for the community safety zones, we have Goldthorpe Road to a mining company as a community safety zone. We have the end of Wood Street and up to King, which has a school and children walking down there, not a community safety zone. So I won't be voting in favor until we can recognize that Wood Street where children walk is a community safety zone over access to a mining company.
Do you wish to clarify?
Through you, worship. Okay, so this, the reason we did this amendment was the community safety zone, the one that we were mending was Greerson, because of the school bus loading zones. And based on the conversation that happened at the previous council meeting, I believe it was Counselor Owen who suggested that it go to the hill. So we moved the community safety zone from what you can see above on that screen, on green, all the way to brown. So it includes the hill. So that's the revision that you're seeing, based on the schedule that was in the agenda and this one, or the new one that is in front of you. The new additions that you'd like to make, what I'd like to do is pass this as is, and then I will bring that back as a report to council.
Okay.
With suggestions for, yes, I have them written down already. I have Goldthorpe, and then looking at Wood and Queen. And I also have a note here to look at the no parking area in front of Ontario Northline and Service Ontario Building. And by all means, if there's any other parking changes that you'd like.
Wood, Wood to King. I, I lived on Wood Street and kids were walking down from King Street, right? And if you, if you did the same thing for Churchill Drive, all the way up to Station Road, Wood Street would certainly be the exact same thing for any kid coming down that route.
Sure.
Over access to a mining company.
Yes, that one there, we actually, when we put the bio, or the schedules together, we were looking at it and saying, well, Goldthorpe's probably not necessary anymore. The speed may be a factor just because of the road curvatures. But I will get a report ready and then talk to Public Works and whether they think it's appropriate to change the speed to 50, and we'll go from there.
So we're voting on the amendment? All in favor? Passed. Thank you.
Motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that bylaw 20-024 being a bylaw to amend by law 15-017 for the regulation of parking for the town of Kirkland Lake be read a third time and enacted and passed.
Questions from councils, there's two questions, could you, oh, sorry, Counselor White?
So just like Ashley had mentioned just a moment ago, the one that we were talking about earlier is the exit of bus station Service Ontario on Government Road East that had been enacted when it was active as a bus terminal, and now it is no longer as such. So that's why the request is being made for it to be altered. But we can accept it as is for the changes that we've already been working on. But I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that that is being looked at currently.
Do you have the two questions?
So I'll just reread that. So basically, we started with this bylaw, we did it a first and second read, then we did the amendment, and now we're doing the third read. So be it resolved that bylaw 20-024 being a bylaw to amend by law 15-017 for the regulation of parking for the town of Kirkland Lake be read a third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
The motion moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that bylaw 20 dash? Sorry, one sec. 20 dash 025 being a bylaw to appoint a chief administrative officer be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Opposed? All in favor? Thank you. You made it, congratulations.
Thank you, worship, thank you, counsel.
Sorry for the hesitation.
Okay, so moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that bylaw 20-026 being a bylaw to delegate administrative powers to the chief administrative officer be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Passed. Questions to council? From council to staff? I don't have those two questions, are they in the package? Oh, you've got them on. Normally, do you want to speak on behalf of her? Provide some, your input?
I believe. Thank you, worship, through you to council. I believe I can cover the first question that was posed to the clerk with respect to the integrity commissioner. There was a council motion passed in 2019. Ms. Elliott has been here for approximately 60 days. It is on her list to look at an RFP for the integrity commissioner. If council would like to attach a, a date to that, when they would like to see it back to provide some indication of priority, we'd certainly be happy to look at that. And we'll get that to you as, as soon as you would like.
Do we know when the contract is up, Megan, with the existing integrity commissioner? I think it's May, isn't it?
I would have to look at the bylaw again. As far as when I was looking at it, it didn't, I didn't think it specified, like, a certain term for a contract, but I don't have it in front of me here.
However, we, council can make a decision to terminate or put out another RFP. I'm sure that was in there. Okay, that's satisfactory, I think. Any questions or comments? Counselor Adams?
So with an RFP two, I know we did that in March 5th, asked for that. But certainly as a cost savings, maybe we could look at partnerships with other towns to share the costs based on their usage, right? See if those kinds of opportunities exist, right? Talk about Timas Community Shores or anyone else.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, the Timas Municipal Association is using the same integrity commissioner as us. I think they did look at that, they've done it as a group, I believe.
They've never talked about it at any meetings that I've been at. But, but I imagine they must be, I don't know for sure.
In some of the meetings I've been on, that was my understanding, but I'll check it out.
Yeah, because I've not, I've never heard them talking about the integrity commission.
Megan?
Through you, worship. I did email out to the, like, T-Meg group that I have of clerks, CEOs, and heads of council, and everyone that has responded is currently using the same E for M that we are.
Question number two? If you can, if you can see it.
Don't, not that well. But I would defer to staff, which. For the matter. To the staff member responsible, worship.
Thank you, worship, through you to council. If I could refer the second question to the staff member responsible, that would be appreciated, thank you.
Counselor White?
So I was the one that posed the question. I understand that this has gone to council before. I was speaking to a former council member after I had posed this question. So from my understanding, these statistics and whatever I asked for have actually been calculated prior.
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, I think something we have to consider before we make any decision is the staffing level, to make sure that we have enough operators to operate the equipment that would be required to keep that pond open. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I think I may have asked this question when I was on Festivals Committee, and they were, the concern was liability because of the slippery terrain and the cost of moving that snow on a regular basis, because you'd have to do it like you do the sidewalks. And it was, I think at that time, the, the cost was astronomical, and they were, were not interested in doing it for, for us. And we were talking about putting a dog sled on there for winter. And we were talking about putting a dog sled on there for winter carnival, and it was, the cost was ridiculous, so.
Counselor Adams? Throw on your snowshoes?
If this, if the statistics have already been calculated for this, if we could just bring it back so that the public knows that there's a dollar amount that would be expected, yeah, that would be helpful, thanks.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, and I think council and staff should look at, if those costs are prohibitive, we've got that facility sitting there all winter doing nothing, there may be other ways of optimizing the use of that, at least part of that area during the winter time, and maybe we could ask for some ideas from staff and council could think about it, because we have that asset sitting there. If we can find a way to get people to use it in the winter, I mean, that's just bonus for the town.
Notices of motion? None declared? Confirmation bylaw?
I have a motion moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that bylaw 20-027 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held March 3rd, 2020, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Passed. Councillors' reports? Counselor Perry?
Okay, I'd just like to say that the Flying Fathers were here a couple of weeks ago, or last week, and we had a pretty good turnout, the Neo-Fax made some money off this, and we had the distinction of having our mayor give the drop, drop the opening face off, and he took it like a champ.
I want to thank you for that, Dennis. I'm long on memory, short on forgiveness. Counselor Owen?
Yeah, first off, I want to say that my mother-in-law always watches this on YouTube, and I'm a little afraid to go to her house now, because she's going to think there's something going on between Counselor White and Counselor Owen, so I just want to say so it's recorded that there is absolutely no truth to that rumor, we're both happily married, and I'll leave it at that. I attended the cabaret, and the part of cabaret that I enjoyed the most was seeing the people from Community Living onstage showing the audience their abilities. And it was a really touching part, and it really showed what an inclusive community we have in Kirkland Lake, and I certainly hope that future cabarets will also include Community Living. It's just, you know, like, we were the first community living in Ontario, that's the history of Community Living, and it's always been just part of the community. It was so nice to see them onstage and singing and playing their little instruments, and you know what? They put on a good show.
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, so through some reading, we were a new council that came in, and we were all excited to do some changes, we brought forward some notices of motion, but how we were doing in the past, just as a heads up to other councillors. When you read our procedural bylaw, section 41, notices of motion shall be received by the clerk at any time, and each motion received in accordance with section 14G shall be included on the agenda for that meeting. So what is 14G? 14G is our notices of motion need to be in writing. So before, we used to take that opportunity, there are notices of motion to verbally update and be transparent and provide the next meeting with a heads up. We just need to be more diligent to make sure that we provide that notice in writing. All good?
You are correct. We haven't been following proper procedure, it was all verbal. You're quite correct. Just to report, Counselor White and myself attended, hope our wives aren't, husbands aren't listening, Rick, so we went to Timmins to the OPP roundtable discussions, a lot of it was about the police service boards and delivery of community policing to the communities. There are some proposed changes to do with boards, whether they're going to cut back in the number, we would still have representation, nothing is finalized, I think. There were some interesting parts to it that I think made a lot of sense. I'm going to let Stacy White comment on one of the things we did find out and what we've proposed.
So actually, we did get to speak with a municipal policing specialist, she wasn't for our specific area, however, she was a specialist in municipal policing. So what she provided with us, and we forwarded to all council members, is an 18-page report that breaks down the financial cost to the municipality. So even though on our budget it says X amount of dollars, and we really can't argue with the OPP saying, no, you're not worth that much and we're not going to pay you, it actually breaks down by POA offenses, criminal offenses, etc. And so it really breaks down the cost to our municipality, and we actually spoke and requested there is an opportunity for in services for new councils or municipalities that want it, that these municipal policing specialists will actually come in and break it down and describe the process to municipalities that want it. So with the support of our fellow council members, we would like to do that in the future if our CAO is in support of that. It's definitely something that we can have done for us and with us, and it was quite interesting to see her perspective on if you have this high level of crime, how it affects minor crime, and what as council or community you can do about it to offset those kind of costs. It's not a miracle, Band-Aid solution, but we can do, we do have the power to change a few things.
I agree, it was very interesting, and one of the things we were trying to get a better handle on was a fairly large adjustment that's been added to our bill from last year, and she did go through that, and it kind of made sense when she did. The other thing, we're hoping to have her to address council as delegation around April the 21st, has to be finalized, we're waiting on, I've made a couple of calls to Timmies Municipal Association, that maybe she could do a presentation to that, 23 communities the night before, and then council the next day. So we found it very informative, I agree with you, Stace, it was well worth listening to, so hopefully we'll get that finalized shortly. Okay? Adjourned?
Motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that council adjourn into an in-camera meeting pursuant to section 239.2 of the municipal act to discuss two proposed land dispositions, one litigation matter, employee negotiations, and identifiable individuals within the corporation.
All in favor? Passed. Adjourned.
Break down a bit, but that's okay.
So are you okay if the staff stays with a TPR that has to present after then, or would you like them to vacate the change?
I think they, no, but because.